Have a chance to look at the video and do that. And take, uh, motion, what's that stuff? Just a couple of things I want to get corrected on.
I'm waiting for the meeting. Wrong meeting.
Dragged me in late.
You didn't know you'd be on, on television?
I knew I'd be on television, yes.
Okay. We'll get used to it anyway.
I will.
Not a complete.
Yeah, exactly.
Did I disrupt you? Trank on?
Uh, no. We're just like waiting on the meetings.
It's the most excited.
Motion?
Make the motion in a few minutes.
Do a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Uh, additions, corrections? I have one or maybe two. Okay? All right, I mean, the top one, uh, is a minor thing. It's members present and then members present again. You changed the members absent from last meeting, uh, which is no appeal. But we want to get down to the new business. And we're one, two, three, the fourth paragraph that begins with consensus. And I, and my sense is when I read that, I don't like the word approve in there because it, to me, when I look at it quick, it, it makes you think that we have approved it. And in reality, we have not. But I'd like to see written in there something to the effect that, um, maybe saying that the proposal has merits and that the applicant should proceed to complete the application. You know, we, we use that word approve a lot when we are voting. And I just don't want to confuse people if they happen to read it.
How about that, that they support the concept that the applicant should proceed?
That's fine. I mean, I don't, that's fine too. You want to change the terminology? Support the concept?
Yeah.
You support the con- concept? Okay. Okay, perfect. Anybody else with additions or corrections?
Yeah, I have to get, kind of remind the, uh, subdivision regs here that we're aiming to, uh, sustain. I'm looking at the last sentence in the, uh, paragraph entitled Review Subdivision Regulations. Which starts with subdivision regulations define subdivisions in accordance with Title 30A MRSA, stating that a lot of forty or more acres shall not be counted as a lot for the purposes of this definition. So, the procedure that we're discussing here says that we're going to strike that definition in order to make the subdivision regs consistent with the existing zoning laws.
Which would be like what you see there in front of you in this picture? That's the...
Was that in the packet?
Yes. And what we'll do is we'll get that cleared up when we get into, um, that part of the, deal today, is we're going to try and clear that up so that, um, it's set, and we'll be set up a date for the, uh, public hearing. And we'll do that tonight too.
Okay, then I won't do the other one.
Anybody else? Okay, with those corrections, um, all those in favor of the, uh, the changes in approving of the minutes themselves? Perfect. Let's go to... New business, I assume? There's nothing going on?
No.
All right. So we're going to spend...
Would that be gender open for what's under this?
Okay. So, so we're back to our business and now we're dealing with the different changes that we have coming up. And the first one is the timber harvesting. And I guess it was my sense that we had a handle on that and that we were basically just kind of deciding or thinking about deciding when we were going to do the public hearing for that. I may be wrong. Want to help me out with that? Yeah?
So, we've got changes from the last time we've taught.
Oh.
So, you guys have new documents, correct?
I think so. In the package.
I took the liberty this morning of calling, um, Stephen and just asking Stephen Buckner and asking him to please try and touch base with Ken, Ken or Brenda today so that, uh, because he wasn't aware of the, uh, disruption we had. And just making sure that they were on the same page with the definition they came up with.
Yep.
He's coming quite regular anyways, just with normal day-to-day business, so he's...
You guys, you guys confer today now? Great, thank you.
He's happy with, uh, five point one nine.
Yeah, so it starts in the land use chart. Originally, we were thinking of striking it all right out. We may leave it as all Ps. We're just trying to get some, somebody back to the state to answer us.
Okay.
On that.
All right.
The footnote will be removed. Footnote four, and we'll reserve it in place because there's several passed there. The definition of timber harvesting, we'll get rid of all the local verbiage and bring the state definition in.
That's the second page, toward the top.
The term.
Yes.
Yeah, so everything with a strikeout is removed. Everything underlined is new. Then under performance standards, five point one nine. Basically, we're going to remove all of five one nine. We were just going to hold that spot, but we ended up adding the definition of all commercial timber harvesting shall be in accordance with the state of Maine Timber Harvest Regulations.
There we see that. Oh, there.
Five nineteen. Yep.
Steve, Steve's having with that.
Yeah, the state told us to just... Right, so the state told us to get rid of everything. Get rid of all of it. We're bringing this back in. I'll try to get somebody from the state to say, yes, that's good. We're okay. And when it comes down to it, we'll get the state standards. So then the other four or five pages is we'll just remove all the state, um, regulations.
Austin's one, two, and three, they're going to figure it out.
All of it. How to cross the river, how to do, uh, the landings, the management roads. So they'll all still be on the state regulations. It just won't be anything we need to use.
Well, after the change, we won't have to update ours.
Yeah, yeah.
And when, when you're talking to the folks in Augusta, or are you, are you talking to Oliver?
Augusta.
Can, can, uh, we maybe utilize Oliver's help in, um, moving this through as we proposed to do?
I think it's all at the Augusta level. Oliver would just be the person who boots on the ground. If we do have a problem, that's him that comes in place and he just needs to be told that act is now within state standards and it's now in his jurisdiction. So he'll gain fifty square miles of enforcement area.
Would your expectation be that, uh, the state perhaps would respond to you between now and the next meeting?
They haven't called back this week.
This was a week ago that you have been...
Yeah, so we'll try to track them. The DEP is very responsive, the Forest Services isn't. I just haven't, I got a return call. I've got a couple into him, so he could be on vacation this week or...
Or.
Or he just may not be able to get to it, so. I think one of my biggest questions is the DEP was telling me to get rid of the whole, land juice chart area. And we were trying to leave it in and just make it all permitted.
And so we're still not sure which way that's going to go?
Correct, so I think that's the only change we'll end up doing is to the... To the land juice chart.
Not really moving that through.
And that could be a reason to kick it out. And after all this, we just don't want it kicked out. So as long as... And I'm thinking maybe then I could get...
Anything else? All right, where are we as far as being able to timeline-wise get the public hearing in prior to, um, June?
I'm thinking the second week of March, maybe. And if we can push it to April, we'll push it to April.
And we still have that time? I mean, and, and there's no issue as far as putting the, bringing the information upstairs?
Correct, so, we're under the assumption if we have comments from a public hearing that changes this, that the selectmen will be okay with changes from a public comment, just not us continuously tweaking. So, which, I just don't want to have a public hearing and not take their input into consideration and not make changes to it, which we've done before, that this is the document.
Right.
Love it or hate it, up or down.
Anybody else? Comments, questions about this particular ordinance change? All right.
And he, Oliver, you mentioned is, like, a space foresters or?
Correct.
He's been out a couple of times when we've had site visits. I'm looking, looking at so different situations when we were in the beginning stages of, uh, thinking about making changes to go along with the state guidelines. Okay, next. No action on the Arnie Martel since I don't...
Well, he did call, he was, he had a sickness issue, so he was just down a little bit.
Okay.
May just be running the course this year as is out there.
How about the, uh, the campground? Anything changed there?
No.
Moving on, whole business, we're now to the subdivision ordinance. And I think this is probably what Tom was referring to a few minutes ago. And, and this was the one, remember, that we were going to have a public hearing, um...
Last meeting?
Yeah, two weeks ago. And, um, didn't happen. So that we, one, at some point need to set a date for this particular public hearing. But maybe what we need to do for a couple of minutes anyway is try and get it cleared up, um, in everybody's mind as to exactly what's going on.
The sub, the, it has been put in the smart shopper for a public hearing.
It has?
It has.
And what's the date?
Um, June, like, maybe June.
I believe it's June, March.
March. Let me go, let me go find it for him. You got it right there, okay. It has been put into the smart shopper. It's on cable.
Okay.
March one.
March first, yeah. Has been gone to the selectmen's meeting and it's posted within the building, yeah.
Okay, so next meeting, essentially at seven o'clock, so it'll be the public hearing to discuss, um, eliminating part of the definition, um, in the subdivision regulations. And you want to reply to that one more time, so that...
Yep. So in the definitions now, it says a lot of forty or more acres shall not be counted as a lot. So this would be similar to the subdivision we just did on the corner of Milton Mills Road and 109, they had two forty acres and an eighty. They were on the assumption those are all exempt. How state law used to be, uh, defined, oh, I think it changed five or six years ago, where those were exempt unless the town said no. Then they flipped it the opposite way, that they're not exempt unless the town says they are exempt. So our zoning ordinance says it's a lot. It doesn't care if it's one acre or eighty acres. So we don't have the exemption. But the exemption is still in our subdivision regs. So basically, we're just going to get rid of that verbiage and just leave it as thirty A, uh, under state statute, and that's what the definition is underneath this. So basically, in this case here, we're just, um, striking out.
So in, just for clarity sake, in going to the, uh, state definition in, which is in our zoning ordinance now?
Yeah.
That allows us to...
Count lots no matter what size they are.
Okay.
And the only time that matters is when they're, I'd say circumventing subdivision, but circumventing subdivision. They, they use the state law to their ability, so that whole subdivision on the corner wouldn't have counted. So they would have created all those lots, although a little bit of it was a shoreline zone, that would have triggered it anyway, so they didn't fight that hard about it with the conflict, so.
So, um, help, help me out, Ken, will you? And just, where is it stated that that, that will be the case, that a, um, a lot of forty or more acres?
Will count? It doesn't exempt it. So now you have to clearly have it that it's an exemption. So currently, we have the verbiage, basically, that says a lot of forty or more acres shall not be counted. Once we remove that verbiage, then it's going to count. It's not going to be an exemption to be exempted out.
And you don't feel the need to spell it out? And in public discussion on this, um, it would be reasonably stated that the town is moving toward a more stringent definition?
Um, it's already in the zoning ordinance. So we're trying to get rid of the conflict between the subdivision regs and the zoning ordinance. And in the zoning ordinance, we'll say the more stricter is going to apply anyway. So it already does. So if they, we would have went to court for that, I think we would have won. But it's great just to get rid of the conflict. Where it's a subdivision reg, you guys can change it after a public hearing. You guys can both change it and it's done. We don't have to leave the town meeting or anything like that.
And is, is there model wording to, um, give us a sense of what will be in the, um, subdivision?
Yeah, so we're just going to strike out those three sentences. Leave the first sentence, it's already there, so we're not adding anything. Underneath, on that piece of paper, is what the state definition is. So where it's telling you to go to Title 30A, um, four, four, oh, one, sub four, that's underneath here, and that's already in our subdivision regs. So our subdivision regs is already sending it, us, to where to find that information. Just where it starts talking about, uh, it, it exempts it right off the bat, so. A lot of forty or more acres?
Oh, no, sorry, down, uh...
Down below.
Yeah, yeah. So like, once it's, once it's been sold?
So this is how to circumvent subdivision. And it's a great rule if you live in Maine and have fifty acres and you've got a big farm, and you want to break a lot off every five years and sell it, so you don't have to do a big subdivision, which is extremely expensive. So the intention is to keep it bigger parcels out there and allow people to own a lot of acreage and, and not, uh, go through subdivision review. But, say you own a hundred acres and you have five grandkids, so you break off five lots and give it to the kids, those are all exempt, they don't count. And that's still how our rules are. And you've got some other relatives, you want to give those off too, those don't count yet either. And you want to break one more off and sell it, that one counts. So you have to hold it for five years and then you can break it off and sell that one. And say it was a twenty acre lot that you sold, that person has to hold it for five years and then he can break a piece off and, and sell it or gift it to other people. It's extremely complicated to track who's had it, how long they've had it, was it a gift, did it count as a lot? I haven't looked at every other state, but I've never seen this anyways out. Everything else is when you want to do a lot line division, um, break a lot off, anything. There's a plan done, there's a planning board, and it's, uh, recorded at the registry. Maine allows this exemption, which is great, I would say, for northern Maine, but it's really, really tough to, to track because you'll create an illegal lot very easily. We've got some in town where they've been breaking them off for five years and the bank contacted us and said, what are you doing about the illegal subdivision? And once they tracked it down, it was the second division of land was created two weeks prior to the five-year holding, so from then on, everything else was illegal. So, and the town allowed people to create non-conforming lots quite often, and they were just considered wood lots. You'll never get a permit for them, but you can cut wood on it and divide it out. The problem comes after somebody's paid taxes on it for ten or fifteen years, sells it to somebody, somebody else buys it, they come in, somebody wants a permit for that eventually. And once we look at it, we'll tell them that's an illegal lot. It needs to somehow be cleaned up, doesn't meet this, doesn't meet that. There's several reasons it can not be a conforming law.
So, so if a family member, um, gets a, a lot, let's say the lot that we're talking about that's been split off to the family member is twenty acres. And, um, that...
The lot is twenty or the lot that...
The original lot was that hundred that we're talking about. So this person is getting twenty. And something happens a year later, they haven't done anything with the lot, but they have a lot, and they said, forget it, I'm getting out of here, I'm, uh, you know, I'm moving to California. So now, is that person, does that revert back to the original hundred? Or, or is it now, how does that get?
I think he has to hold it for five years before he can sell it. And I'm not sure how banks would deal with that. So say he built a house on it the first year and for whatever reason he needs to leave. I don't know if there's an exemption in there for mortgage companies to be able to sell it. I think the big thing is that you're not creating another lot. You're not breaking that twenty acres into another one for five years. So, the intention is homesteading, trying to keep the big parcel in one. Because we know if that hundred acres was going into subdivision, you'd have to, the, the cost of three or four lots is going to be, um, your engineering, your subdividing, all that. So you're going to have to do ten or twelve lots just to make any money and move forward. So it's a great avenue if you're, you've got family members and you're just trying to break a couple of pieces off. But it's extremely complicated to track.
So who's tracking it for?
Uh, when people come in for a permit, we'll look and realize that the lot was created. If, if it looks like it doesn't meet today's standards, then we really go back and start looking. Or if it's, uh, got a dash, so if it's lot, uh, map five, lot two, once one's broken off, then it's dash one, two dash one.
So you would...
So we know it's coming out of the mother lot and where it came from. And then if that one's divided, then it's two dash one dash one. So that's coming out of that, so we kind of have a good sense of it. And at that point, then we're looking for the, um, chronological order from the deed.
So you're not relying on anything to give your heads up?
No, no.
All right, anybody else on the subdivision section?
So again, the only thing we're doing is we're striking out, clearly exempting the forty acre exemption.
And that language exists, exists in the subdivision regs?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so when it's sending us to Title 30A, this is what Title 30A says underneath it.
So the, the whole little paragraph at the top of the page of, uh, that says Article three hyphen definition is from the subdivision regs?
Correct. So we're just going to leave that one, the first sentence.
Thank you.
Good? Anybody else? Okay, moving on. The, uh, the next one is the, uh, what is that called?
ADU.
Accessory Dwelling Units.
Additional Dwelling Units, another dwelling unit. Let everyone make ADUs stand up. We can confuse ourselves enough. So what we were looking at is, some people may call it an in-law apartment or, um, the terminology a lot of states are using is the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU. We looked at a lot of different towns and a lot of them said, has to be a family member, has to be removed when their family member dies and moves off. We didn't want to have to determine who lives and who owns, so we tried to keep it as easy as practical. So the first part, under minimums, lot sizes, is it needs to be a conforming lot to begin with. This first part, we're adding a D to it. If you look in the zoning ordinance, it's A, B, C, and then this is just hanging after it. So we're breaking this out to D.
What's in twelve, thirteen?
Yeah, right above the name of the table.
It's on the same page, it was beginning with... Uh, twelve.
We're going to use the yellow book.
Tom's got the yellow book.
Good job.
You can find it because it's got all the parts in the orange book.
Right. I thought it was colored.
She's got to take his orange book. She told me to take your orange book, Tom. Good boy, you laugh.
All right, so C is there.
Yeah, so C is there, and then D was a paragraph underneath C with nothing. We didn't call it anything, so we added the D just so we know what we're calling it. And basically, what this is saying is if you're in two acre zoning, you're going to need two acres for your multifamily and stuff like that. So we just put an exception in for ADUs. Then we added a line in the land juice table that it is reviewed by us. The question we had is commercial A, B, and C. Do we want to allow it in A, B, and C? And then it's not allowed in Resource Protection Showland of Little Off State. So commercial A, B, and C would be on 109 in different areas. Most of it's all residential already. I don't really see an issue with it if somebody's wants to or not, but, uh, the intention of the commercial zone was to kind of save it for commercial.
Do we necessarily want to take it away from people who own the homes?
Already have a home there? Yeah, I don't, I don't see it as an issue.
So might we think about it as an R? In these cases?
Yeah.
Under the three quarters.
Yeah. I mean, I know one of the ones that you were talking about when we had this discussion earlier in the week was the one over by, uh, also over by Willie's. That was, uh, our studio was a survey place and now it's turned back to a residential area. You know, if by chance they wanted to do something like this...
And it's, we're all an aging population and maybe there's, there's somebody that needs somebody to come in and...
I mean, I think I, I personally like the idea of not designating it as a in-law apartment kind of deal. And I think that would be a nightmare to try and deal with.
That could be the last thing, what you want living with him?
Uh, what happened with the Aqua for Protection District says N A?
N A, uh, we left it as not applicable because it's just an overlay and these other would address all of it anyways.
Oh, I see what you're saying, it's overlaid by the other three right there.
Oh, I see what you're saying, it's overlaid by the other three right there.
Yeah, because it's over rural, critical rural, it's everywhere.
Right, right, okay, that makes sense.
Well, I left that from the timber harvesting issue when we, that was our full-up agreement.
Anybody else have any concerns about that?
Commercial?
Extra unit and putting something like, you know, CEO review as, in each of those commercial sections.
So the proposal on the three commercials is R?
Correct.
Times three?
Yep. Then the definition, we try to keep it as simple as practical, it's a permitted use to an owner-occupied, one-family dwelling. And then the regulations for it, only one accessory dwelling unit located within an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted. The lot is a conforming lot, meets all the current, so you can't have a legal existing non-conforming lot if it's two-acre zoning, you've got the two acres. 800 square feet would be the minimum, or the maximum size of the unit. A lot of them were 600, a lot talked on bedroom counts and things like that, but I know a lot of older couples sleep in separate bedrooms, so limited to a single bedroom. And as long as it's 800 square feet, I don't see it as an issue. And then that it'll meet all the building and subsurface wastewater disposal rules and things like that.
And nothing as to where this might be?
A lot of towns talked about no front door, you had to come in the back door, it can't look like a duplex. 50% of the size of the structure, limited a lot of that. 800 square feet seemed like an adequate number. A lot of towns were 600 square feet, so that's 24 by 24 would be right at that.
Ken, do you want to consider clarifying that to be first floor or footprint?
Doesn't matter to me if they want to go upstairs, downstairs, whatever.
Well, let me get clear on something, is this a, could it possibly be a detached unit?
This was attached. We have other regulations in there for detached.
Is that clarified somewhere?
Well, it's within an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling.
100, probably.
Where?
That's A.
A, okay.
It's within that single-family dwelling unit. So we've got areas where if you want to do the two units, then you're either meeting all the zoning, or in some zones, you just multiply it by 50% road frontage and lot size. That was becoming a lot of issues that we saw when we were looking at people, the road frontage, they just don't have. They may have 20 acres, but they've only got 300 feet of road frontage, so they weren't able to make the road frontage. And we're seeing it both ways that, or three ways, I guess. The older people are having their kids come back and live in a little unit, or the kids are having their parents come back and live in a little unit, or somebody's just putting a unit on there for a caregiver or something like that as well. Or it could be income-based.
So the difference between these as described as being ADUs, there would be a separate detached dwelling unit situation that would be called multifamily?
Correct, two-family, we are having the zoning for two-family, and that's why we have to add this as an exception on that very first one where D is. Talks about the one residential dwelling unit on the lot itself. All-dimensional requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling unit principal structure. And so if you're in five-acre zoning, this is saying you need 10 acres, although I can find a confliction back and further on that would reduce it only to 50%. So this is, so we already have in the ordinance in a couple of spots where if you want to have multiple dwelling units on the lot. That's why we brought this exception in for the ADU, that you don't need all the extra land and the extra road frontage. This is something simple and easy and...
Anybody else have any concerns? So then down the road, we would need to do again the public hearing for this also. Has the meeting from March 1st been written so that it's specifically about the subdivision?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll try to either push these to the last meeting in March or hopefully April.
Everybody good with the idea of this? Seems to be a good concept to me too.
And again, it's just not permitted in resource protection shoreline or littoral speed.
We don't care if they have one driveway or two driveways?
No. One of the areas I saw we almost put in was no on-street parking, all you're parking is the off-street, but that really doesn't seem to be a big deal in town.
Right.
And again, there are public hearings, if we find some good info, you can tweak this and change it if we have to.
Sure.
And then the parking vans. Winter parking vans. Usually all those problems are in the shoreline zone for parking on the street, so people out there aren't fishing.
Okay, next. Do you have anything with yourself that...
I'm on the non-conforming vacant lots. I have that in my yellow folder.
I'm not sure what we're talking about here.
All right. So we've all found that we're looking at something. So the ordinance says, in 1472, if you've got two non-conforming lots, they don't meet today's standards because of frontage, lot size, whatever, and they're in the exact same ownership, they get merged together automatically. So if you've got two 50 by 100 lots, they're in the same ownership, they're automatically merged. And most of that merging's already been done over time. Or he owns one, she owns one, they own one, he owns one, she owns one, so it's not, it's in different ownerships. Last year we had this, and I really never understood what this area would propose to strike out as. It says unless it's in the shoreline zone, you can come and say, "That was a lot 30 years ago, you've only been paying taxes on one lot, but yet there's two out there, and you can pull that other lot back up and have a 50 by 100 lot." Well, last year or the year before, we tweaked it a little bit and added the 100 feet of frontage and it had to be at least 20,000 square foot of lot size. But we're still seeing if it was an existing lot, you could pull it back out and make it a lot again. So this was a question for the board. Oddly enough, this is only permitted in the shoreline zone, which is maybe the last place you'd want non-conforming lots to be popping back up. And I guess I wouldn't have a problem if it's in his name, our name, their name. You've divided, they're in separate names, you're paying taxes on a separate lot all the time versus it's kind of like current use or, you know, you've paid a lower tax rate on it for X amount of years. The one we had pop up last year or the year before, it was still in the ownership of the family, but it went to a trust and the parents were much older and the kids had it and they were trying to say the lot exists. And we were working through this regulation with a couple of, I think there were three lawyers involved in it for the whole time because they're talking to substantial amount of money for the shoreline zoning. It was on Great East at the time, the neighbor ended up just buying it anyways to make sure there wasn't a new house next to them, so, which it went away, but it's like...
So what if each lot has a house on it?
Then that doesn't matter. So it has to be vacant lots.
Well, that's vacant.
Only one of them would have to be vacant. I mean, there could be a house on one of the lots.
Yep, so if you owned a house, you had your house on one lot and the lot next to you was vacant and it was in the same ownership, it should be merged together on the state law.
It's only if they're right next to each other, not like across the street?
I would say across the street would be the two separate lots.
I mean, you end up knowing that by the tax bills that you get.
Correct, are you going to get two tax bills or are you going to get one tax bill? That's usually my standard question when they want to sell or build on that second one.
I mean, there's a number of lots that are next door to camps or cottages where we are, you know, on Square Pond. And to my knowledge, none of them have ever been able to be split and they have attempted to split. There've been instances where the homeowner has sold and attempted to try and sell the lot with the house on it and then sell the lot also.
Yeah.
Not able to do that.
So on the maps, we have these little dash lines that show where this lot was divided before and it's been merged together. So this is telling us, and you can kind of see these are 60-foot lots roughly, and these were one, two, three, four, and this person ended up buying two at once so they didn't have, so they had a little bit more room. This one was probably two lots merged together years ago.
But like 22 has two buildings on it, right?
Yeah, I, that could be a shed or a garage.
Or a field.
Yeah, so that, that looks like it's a small camp on the backside of it. But the total combines only 37,000 for the two camps, or the two buildings.
And if years ago, somebody was aware of the change in the law and, you know, a lot next door became available and was then bought by the person who owns the house next door...
They usually, if they go to a land use attorney to do the closing, usually they're knowledgeable enough to say, "If you want to keep this a separate lot, we're going to put this in a trust or it's going to..."
Turn somebody else's name.
Or if you want to save your taxes, we'll merge them right together, you can get a lower tax for a lot of it, so.
Is that all good with everybody?
I'm clear as to what we're actually, what's the situation we're allowing?
We're eliminating the exemption that you can dig the deed up for this lot that really hasn't existed for 20, 30 years and say, "I have two lots, I want to bring my lot back." And then basically you can create a non-conforming lot. We did add in the 100 feet of frontage and the 20,000 square feet, I don't remember if that was last year or the year before, that's some state verbiage we put in there just to be in compliance with the Chapter 1000 at the state level.
So that part that we put back in, we're now taking back out?
We're taking it out if the board thinks it, because it just goes back to it's the shoreline zone. If you were going to allow this in a rural district or a critical rural, I could almost see it more, but in the shoreline zone...
Looks like the two of them are pretty close to being identical.
Yeah, yeah. So if this lot existed and say that was a dwelling unit and this was a dwelling unit, they would still be able to split this on the state law, they would have to be as conforming as possible. So you would still, if this had two houses on it, which we do have a lot of lots in town with two houses on it, you can still split it.
Even if we get rid of this?
Correct.
Because one of them was not vacant?
Correct.
Well, even though that looks like it's almost over the boundary?
Yeah, our maps could be fuzzy at best some days.
So again, going back to the idea that one of the two lots that we're talking about must be...
Vacant, yeah. So this one here, lot 33, this had two houses on it, and they did a division to try to make it as best as practical, so now this is dash line here. This was last year, last year or the year before. She wanted to give it to some people. So that was one of the camps, and that was the second one. So it had two structures on it, two dwelling units. So they were able to divide that out as fair as practical. Supposed to be as conforming as practical, couldn't get much more road frontage form without encroaching over on this. That would be one that could be come back up. That meets the standard 12 out that we added a couple of years ago, 100 feet of frontage and 20,000 square feet.
And so with changing this, that house, that lot would never be able to be divided back again?
Yeah, so they're getting one tax bill, this is one lot right now, it's three-quarters of an acre roughly. These are showing where the old deed referenced, two different lots out there.
And the two buildings are...
I think that back one's a garage.
Are both in the same lot anyway.
Yeah, that one's just a garage.
Nothing escapes Ken Paul in this town.
I meant your guidance. Your guidance would say we like it like that. Thoughts?
Well, I guess I'm thinking, has anybody recently come to you looking to, you know, put it back into two lots?
Yeah, last year was the last one we had when... It was on this lot here, one, two, three, four, so this was four lots prior to. And I think the buildings were over here a little further, where our mapping's a little off, so they were trying to create this lot here. And that's when the neighbors, I'm trying to think why they were at the planning board, but this did come through planning board a little bit, we talked about it. And finally, the neighbors just purchased it. Because they were telling us it didn't exist, you can't use it. I'd never even dealt with that regulation before, and then when I was reading it, I'm like, "I think it can," but it's a tough regulation to read. And again, it went to a trust, the family still owned it, but it went from the parents owning it to a trust. So now you're really splitting hairs to say, "Do the original people still own it?" They're still, he's in the camp right now, so I would say, yeah.
And so that issue has been...
On this particular site?
Taken care of and nobody else has come forward attempting to try and circumvent it a little bit. Are you pretty confident that this is going to clear that all up by striking all the...
Yeah, if it's a non-conforming lot, they're merged together and that's it, you don't pull them back out.
With the exception that two pieces of land, I mean, two buildings on it.
Yeah, or if they want to split areas over what a dwelling unit was, right?
I think it says primary structures, so if you had a, and we don't have any marinas, but if you had a mariner on one and a house on the other side, you can still divide it because it'd be two principal uses.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot, so, but I think that would just clear it up a little bit.
You good?
Well, you got a couple of weeks because somebody goes to Florida in March and he likes his public hearing in March, so. Not naming names.
Of course not. All right, anything else that we need to discuss tonight?
Done the zoning changes?
I don't know, unless you keep following the other one.
No, I have an amendment to a conditional use that I'm talking about with the Monarch Mountains people. So currently, we allow them to have a crusher in there for 15 days. Oh, March, October to May. There's when we allow it, 60 decibels, blah, 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 blah. When they set up, they, they have a gentleman come in from, I think, New Mexico or something like that to set the crusher up. And they used some really, really good forethinking of where the crusher was going, the angle it was, where the stockpile was being fed from, where it was being put from, the way the loader was facing for the backup alarm to be all absorbed in. So they want to go up to, they want a permanent crusher on site, they want to buy one and have their own. They want to limit it to six hours a day, 800 hours a year, which, I suppose I could look at the hour meter for it. But the biggest thing is, I'm not getting any complaints out there at all from when it, from their normal operation and it's varying in pretty, pretty far terms. Were it 60 decibels, they'd drop it down to 50 decibels at the property line.
So what kind of process are we going through with them?
It would be an amendment to the existing conditional use to change Note Number 7 on the plan. And I think the first thing I was going to say is, we can go out and do a site walk and listen to their crushing operation in action from the entrance way of the property line or something like that, not here, and then go up and see it in action to see how just a little bit of common sense. And again, if it, they've put it down in a hole with berm, so if it was exposed in an open area and the backup alarm was just facing perfectly towards the houses out on 109, I think I'd be getting more calls about it. But the only thing people are saying is, the yellow trucks come in, the yellow trucks go out, that's, they don't hear the operation, they just see the trucks coming in and the trucks going out.
What do we typically allow for, for the cores and top? What have we done for the ones out on Hopper Road and things like that?
Atr, most of them are out there.
Atr, sorry.
Right, like Spectrum, that's just the summertime too, some, some of the, the sound that was calling.
Yeah, that one would be tough because once it gets on a leg, it, it travels much further. Tasback, which is Landscape Depot, he's elevated up higher, it kind of travels a little bit more, they don't have the buffer they do. Heppons would probably have that as well, I mean, they're in a big buffered area too. And it's just laying out the processing area, bringing your material to that area, keeping it right there and just absorbing it down through there. I mean, they do have a lot of rock out there they need to crush because the stockpile's just big.
When you say "they," you mean Monarch?
Monarch, yeah.
So that's contrary to what they said to us when we were out there a few years ago because they were talking about how this stuff is just perfect the way it is and we anticipate having to do much of anything.
So the byproduct of the rock from screening, because they screened really, really fine. The owner of the property, Sac Crete, those are the bags of sand you buy at the stores. So they don't want any rock in there, but now they've got such a surplus of rock, they've got to do something with it.
And, and so what, would they be, you know, amenable to the idea of coming in and taking care of, you know, that pile of rock that they have and, and doing it at an extended amount of time with the crusher? Or really, they talking about this thing as being long-term for the next 20 years or whatever the heck they're going to be out there doing it?
Yeah, so they want to buy it and have one set up permanently up there and run it as they need it?
As long as they're there, it will be there.
Correct, yeah. And I think most of it is just convenience versus renting one and bringing one in. And I think if the decimal meetings readings are, I mean, they were extremely low when I was just on the outside of the berm and that's still...
Would this be an opportunity that we could, you know, put some other conditions into place that wouldn't necessarily be directly linked to the crusher or almost, or...
If it were to be.
We're going to be confined to the...
I had that on the top, I was just saying. I think they're pretty good as far as anything out there for...
Well, say we want to work on the revegetation plan or something, would this be an opportunity to do it or is it constricted to the, just the particular item?
Yeah, they're, they're, they have a bond with the state for revegetation out there, but they're extremely reasonable to talk to as far as if you're looking to revegetate a better habitat area, unless they, and Gold was a golf course out there or something like that. I think we, we can talk to the regional supervisor out there and just, if they're going to revegetate, I think they're more than willing to revegetate to a habitat area versus just grasses and whatever trees grow up through there.
Right, because I don't remember getting any sort of trees indicated in the plan or, or other, you know, landscaping design features that would help with erosion and these sort of things, but maybe we're overstepping our bounds on this particular...
We can ask.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a big, big thing that we could pressure in, they probably own another crusher, it's such a big company, they could just, they're probably not even moving that.
Run it about 1,600 feet to the Wilson Lake camps.
I mean, are you starting this point at the place that the crusher would always be?
Well, that's the mound area there and I don't think it's something they're going to want to move all the time. And we could key it into a location. But again, I, I think, and I, we've just been talking about it over the last couple of weeks, so I don't have any real solid things, but we could, once we get the application. So I think my thoughts were just a site visit, why they're running.
And but they can't start running until...
Well, they have their 15 days they can do and they're going to start in March 1st.
Right.
This would still be October to May?
No, they're asking for year-round now, right?
Year-round, yeah.
This would be, this would be year-round.
But I'm thinking if the decimal readings are fairly quiet outside of the berm area, I, I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal. The big thing is the vegetated buffer. It's tough to go through that vegetated buffer. Going out this Black Ground Road is probably a mile before we get to another house. So the only ones, and that's the ones we were really concerned about, was the Wilson Lake area and into that Horns Pond area.
How far is that Horns Pond?
Subdivision that we got built, but... 4,000, yeah, that was by... She's at 2,400 feet.
Is she there, do you think?
No, I've asked her and all, all you see is the trucks, you don't hear anything. So these are my closest abutters, I would say, in this area here.
Are there any of those abutters who are... Well, everybody would be here in the summer with the crusher and you don't, so that's not an issue.
I would increase truck traffic for me. Well, I guess that's something we should ask them, but...
I think this is a high point here as far as elevation. Elevation's going to play a huge game in it. But when you're down in that hole, just, I was amazed on how well that sand was absorbed into the material they had up there.
So what recourse do you have, let's say, right now? In the middle of the 15 days, you had, you know, 20 people come screaming in here how noisy it is on a Friday morning, kind of a deal. We vokated for those 15 days.
Add 60 decibels at the property line.
Right, and we know that the 60 decibels is ordinarily fine. These people are screaming about it, one of two things, right? Either 60 is not low enough or it's above 60. I mean, I guess that would be the most logical thing, that it'd be above 60 if they were screaming about it, but... What recourse would you have, I guess is really what I'm trying to say? If they were within our guidelines and yet there's still a lot of people complaining, do we have any, anything that we can do to help them?
If it was a violation of the conditional use, it'd be a violation, they would be exceeding the 60 decibels. So since you've been talking, you started at 62 decibels and rose to 83. Just your voice talking in here is accurate as my free app is.
Well, I mean, we have the ballpark, right?
I would think so.
Okay, so...
And that's the property line.
And that's the property line.
Pretty far away from where it's at.
So I, I think we can look at the condition of the, it's within 100 yards of the crusher or something like that, just so. The individuals running it now are doing a really good job, they're forward-thinking, they're proactive, so I assume the whole company is, but we could just, instead of at the property line, we could say within 100 yards of the operation or something like that, something...
Is there, is there anything that we have to be concerned about, about setting a precedent?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
If we hold them to a decimal reading within the area or something like that.
It's kind of like what we did with Peppin.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of exceed what we do with them. I think that's right, you said it was like within 300 feet, it's got to be below 60.
To keep it into that area?
Yeah, as opposed to the property line, I, I think that's what I remember us doing with Peppin.
Each one's a little different, some may not have neighbors, some may be elevated at a, an elevation higher and that sound's going to drop down through, so each site's a little bit different.
Can their property consist of those two lots?
Correct.
What about like limiting it still from like October to May? And if they have more time to crush, maybe they want to have the big stockpiles if they have that?
Then on these two lots here, number two and number three as well.
There's some people there.
But those aren't really in the conditional use, berm, they're just...
Correct, just one or two, it's all rocky.
That in the metro berm line, blue line?
Right, yeah, yeah, Salmon Falls.
Oh, that's Othwell from Great Easton.
In Horns Pond.
Yeah, there's a pretty good-looking pond in number one there.
Right there?
Yeah.
Used to be, it's dry now.
Is it?
Yeah. Something blew apart here a couple of years ago and washed everything down.
Oh, maybe it might have been.
Isn't that the police miller's pond?
Uh, she's two.
All right, is everybody, would they all made an agreement that at least we look at this and maybe take a, you know, do a site visit out there and, you know, listen?
I think, well, if they start March 1st to the 15th, we can't go out on the second meeting and see running because it'd be clearly a violation of their 15 days to take it running.
If they started to get longer.
If they kept going. And that's had to police to...
Sure.
And it's a six-hour day, so...
They want to limit it because they're not going to run it from the first day.
Yeah, yeah.
But they've got their trucks to keep going and it, it's going to stop the stockpile from getting as big as it has been.
The existing limitation is what, how many days?
15. And I think that only started because this Tasback I first run we did, he only needed it for 15 days a year or something like that, so that kind of, we just focused on that.
I'm sure you kind of left a lot of the things in place from the first one.
Did they get exemption from the GP for a larger area open?
Yeah.
Isn't it 30 instead of...
I didn't think it was 30, I thought it was 20.
20 instead of 10?
Yeah, and they had to put a bar on that.
That's something we should look at again, just to see what we're doing with that. Because it looks like it's pushing 20 acres or something.
Yeah, so this was a big...
Something to consider.
Right, this was a big deal when we had the prior owner out there and we looked into it, so under that law, roads don't count, stockpiles don't count.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize that, so once we, once we looked at it with the state, and they had some poor vegetation areas, they tried to get vegetated and it didn't take, so they're revegetation, revegetating the vegetated areas.
Now, when you say "they," you mean Monarch or do you mean the original?
Prior owners.
And you're considering that area in the front vegetated at this point or...
It wasn't, that was, it was an attempted area, that's for sure.
Well, how do we determine if it's vegetated yet? Is this vegetation?
Yeah, yeah.
True, but if you look at the map, then it's like one blade of grass every five square feet.
No, the state does have a definition for how she likes it.
I'm just wondering how, you know, if we could help them out with some of this, and just up the same ground.
They're extremely reasonable and open to almost all of it, so there's seven acres right there.
Right, yeah, it's easily 20 acres open here.
Subtracting the roads and the stockpile area.
Right, I was going to say, you can't tell, can you, in that first acreage whether or not there are stockpiles and...
There is.
Roads and things like that, so...
But they're not really that big. When we saw the stockpile when we went to Peppin, I mean, there's a lot of material in that kind of, pretty concise area.
This guy's a hell of a tool.
It's a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Because they got like different types of material in different areas of the lot or on different lots even. That was part of the two, they were like, "Oh, we got 10 acres open on this lot, I got 10 acres open on this lot, I'm still good."
No, it's all in lot. It's a calculation.
What was that, what was that one in size?
Nine.
So 79.
So that's their screener right there. So as the material comes in, the rock goes one way, the sand goes one way, the screen and sand goes another. So that process is multiple in ways, so...
And we're back to where that crusher is expected to be, can we get closer to that?
Maybe we can get like a, some sort of paperwork about what we improve after the next meeting? Or do we get back on the...
No, this just came in. Yeah, so it was Note 7 on the plan. Portable crusher operation limited to 15 days between October 1 and May 1, excluding weekends' operation, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, less than 60 decibels at the property line.
You know, another thing, just thinking about the magnitude at this point in particular, when we restrict certain operations like crushing, no crushing on weekends during the summer months, when you have an increased traffic flow on 109, I think that's a good situation to retain or consider retaining.
Well, the crusher's not going to generate truck traffic that day, that's just processing the stockpile and I think...
But you know what I'm saying, just as it's, it's this alternate consideration that might have some sense to it.
Yeah, I don't think we need to give them full year round when they're going for 15 days in a month. I mean, they were drilling a well near me today and you could hear it.
Oh, yeah.
Half a mile away, I mean, so you still notice it even if it's...
It's like a 10 and a half.
Even if it's 60 decibels, you're still still hearing it. It's like a vibration.
What was that?
Drilling a well, they were.
On this company?
No, up, up near my place today.
So where is this pile of rock that they have...
Generated?
Yeah.
Somewhere right there.
Lots of it was right in this area here. A lot of it was up in this area here is where they were prepping and working it before.
That's where they were filtering the outcomes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. They were trying to clean up a lot of the prior owner. It was just, if he didn't need it, he buried it and worked it that way. But it looks like they've got this all Philly, um, starting to be put back in to look at. They're looking for exhausting and reclaiming. So would we wanna do a site walk, just to see what things were doing before our next meeting on the first?
The site walk is to look at the...
Listen to the operation.
Of the...
They still be going at six at night?
That's gonna be my request, if somebody would be there and just...
Oh, just crank it up?
Just crank it up.
Six at night, but it's not even late.
How are we for, do we wanna...
We don't, we don't have them doing it on the weekends, so it would have to be during the week before four o'clock.
Let's, um... I'll get more information, get back to us for the next meeting, and we'll try to do something on the fifteenth and see if... Would people be able to make a five o'clock on the fifteenth?
At some point, doesn't the time change too, to make it advantageous to us? I don't know when that is, but...
It must be April.
Uh, it's in March.
Is it March?
Will it weekend be on the question?
Be like saving time is a lucky.
A lucky?
Yeah, Saturday night is the tenth, so...
Saturday?
March.
That could be the next meeting after that.
I think weekends, we prohibited it from running. I don't know.
We couldn't make an exception, so...
Yeah, we did it here.
We can do it.
So I'll get more information for the next meeting, and we'll see if we wanna go out on the fifteenth. By then, we'll know what time sunrise, sunset is.
Sure, absolutely.
Super workers, yeah, see what goes along.
Can't make the artist see how vegetated it is, but... As a noun.
Everybody good with that?
Says the sunset is, um, six fifty on the fifteenth.
Makes sense.
The date again on a public hearing coming up for March 1st.
March 1st.
For, and what is the...
Subdivision.
And so that's the next date that we have to really be concerned about at this point. You know, specifically, the other ones are, you know, all potential things that we're talking about. And that one of those would be perhaps a site visit on the fifteenth.
March 1?
March 1 is the subdivision public hearing. And March 15th is the possible site visit before our meeting. Anybody else? And we are still talking about other public hearings and, you know, we're into April, so we don't need to worry about that so much. That's good. Any other bits of information that we need to deal with tonight?
Just out of curiosity, is this a new, um, mapping?
How old's the map?
Yeah.
I usually go to my house and see what my idea of its effect and what my junk looks like and...
Is it based off of...
Yeah.
Till the last summer probably?
Last fall, usually they try to get it when the leaves are off the...
I know, we don't see too much snow.
I'm amazed at the detail that you can get out of this thing.
Tom's got too much trees in his property, can't see anything.
What is that? Looks like I have a swimming pool there.
That's your neighbor.
Oh, no, I mean, those real dark areas, they're just shade.
Uh, this is cut-out area here, and we've got something cut out back there.
This would be your garden right there.
Your neighbor has a swimming pool?
And a pond.
And a pond.
That's where we left the...
Right, right. I think they're saying...
I think a lot of this is made up, this is just...
You're in denial, it's all... I can't be harmed, I can't be harmed.
It's a closer pad of broccoli, I'm pretty sure.
Bob's home. No junk in his yard.
It's there.
Yeah, yeah. Get out here, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that happened in the fall, so that's not been, that's been... Since then. How about the house, her house on the second, six to thirteen, nothing's ever been?
They still building in there?
Yeah, we've got, this one is all done now, and they just added another one here.
We're looking at number, uh, six on the other side.
Is David still owner there?
Um, in a family name. Technically, he's the one who's seen it, and it's rented. But other than that, no. If that makes any sense.
I don't know what the hell that means.
We can't track it either. It's too shady, we can't see what you're doing. Hey, I'm at work.
The thing, the truck's always here.
Yeah.
Let's see if we've done that stonework in the front.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That wasn't done yet, before that.
That was in summertime, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was more like June and then, yeah, so...
Ken, on these other proposed amendments going to town meeting, what's the sense of, you could have just tried to squeeze in some public hearings and combine them on one day?
I think for the zoning, yeah, we'll get the subdivision off the table, and then we'll be just looking at three of the subdivisions. And we'll mingle the conditional uses through. If it's quiet, we'll get these done now and be ready.
All right, anything else?
Uh, we have a new member and a new secretary, I meant to establish some introductions at the beginning, so Donna knew who was talking about what. So Donna is our new secretary. Dawn is our new member.
There we go.
Dawn, Dawn.
There's an awful lot of boats at the boat storage place, so it wasn't summer.
Well, there you go. It was early spring before the...
Sure, because in June, wouldn't be that many boats there.
Usually they try to get it with the vegetation, as it come out.
Do you find, uh, do you find your boat?
It's right there. Technically, that's your boat.
Well, that's right.
Exactly.
For use by you. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Done deal, thanks for doing it.